On the bus and only seat for seventy, so.
Okay.
You can't sit on your lap, can't bring him on the bus.
So we're returned after a short break, we are heading into the two fifty-five applications that we started reviewing last work session and we're continuing with this work session, so we're just starting off with section two fifty-five nine, permit required application, before we move on to the next session. I just have a question and I was asking Laura about this for sec- C one. And I think we'll have to refer this to probably to Bob because it's just saying that the applicant, there needs to be a business listed in the county of Suffolk. So it's not something that we've been generally requiring whether it's Suffolk or it's New York State. We're just saying that in order to, to, I guess any companies that are coming in, in order for us to have any ability to.
It's a pain jurisdiction in our courts.
Right.
So if they're not, if they're in a Delaware corporation with this code, I believe saying is that we need a natural person or individual who resides in County of Suffolk that will accept service of payee on the corporations behalf.
But, but, but I don't think we've been complying with, with, with that necessarily always having a County of Suffolk person, have we?
Well, what happens is whenever there's a corporation and it says list the name of, of stockholders and members and percentages, they put NA. It's like not applicable, and then I call back and I'm like, it is applicable and I need that, so, yes, you know.
So we always have somebody from Suffolk?
Um, no, not always, it's not always been checked, nope.
But they have a representative that they give you from Suffolk County, right?
Yes, yeah, it uses the applicant, usually, most times the applicant or a person, you know, if the contact person is also on the.
So that's usually the owner of the property?
No, not the owner of the property, whoever's going to use the event, the owner of the property has to sign.
But like say, say, say like the Warrior Dash that was coming through.
Right.
Or any, and so they, they, one of them is a Suffolk County resident?
No.
So then what do you do in that case?
Well, we should ask for somebody that, that resides in Suffolk County that will accept service on their behalf.
Right, because that's the problem that we had with Creek Road and with the, you know, houses that were being illegally rented out is that the owners lived out of state, so you couldn't serve them with documents to tell them to come to court, so now we changed it to where they have to say that there's a manager within Suffolk County so that we can serve them.
So my point is, is are we going to be able to, are we gonna have to, are we gonna deny a, an event because they don't have somebody in Suffolk County?
I mostly think they should.
That's, that's my question.
Yes, yes.
So, okay, so we leave this in and somebody who does not have a representative in Suffolk County will be denied?
Right, right.
That's fine, as long as we're all on, all clear with that.
Unless you change the code, yeah?
Absolutely, because we, otherwise we would have to pay to go into Westchester to have somebody serve them or, and then it wouldn't be able to be served in our justice court, so, yes.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out for the events that we have coming through, is it practical for them all to have someone for Suffolk? And if it's not practical, then we're going to be denying the event.
It is practical because if something happens, this is litigation, we need to get a hold, we need to legally attach to that.
That's fine, that's, as long as we're clear that we're doing this, that's all.
Cause they would, they have to decommission, like the last, I mean, he got ill, he was a Riverhead resident, but when he put up all of the props for the run that we had at Grumman, he didn't take down all the props, but, you know, he was ill, but we have to be able to tell someone.
Have a contact.
He's using them though.
When you get more specific, make it to town of Riverhead and that would really limit the number of chapter five, two fifty-five.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for that.
Joining on the South Old Vanwagon.
Um, and now I'm gonna just go to C four and this is, I know that you had put the parking in the code. Because we're asking short form, long form now based on the number of total attendees for the day, I think we, and yet a lot of events do come in waves. So for the parking spaces, are we going to have to, then we have to require one, one spot for every people for the total days attendees? Or for the maximum per hour? Because I think otherwise we're gonna, we're, we're, it's, we're sending a confusing message, so if you have a thousand during the day, do they need to have, you know, two hundred and, you know?
I think you need for the entire event because who's gonna be there counting costs? Who's gonna be there?
Right.
But if you have an event that's two thousand people.
Right.
Right, in one day, so then they would have to have how many, what?
Right, so they see it's two point five or whatever you figure out as far as people per car, and then that's seven.
They'd have that four hundred, they'd have that four hundred, like four hundred spots and.
But that might not be there next time, so.
Right, so that's, that's my point, I, I mean, you could have, you know, I mean, we see how many events that say they have twenty-five hundred, three thousand people coming in for the day. Right, are we really gonna make them have, you know, that many hundreds of spots if people are coming in in waves? Because we know the venues we have now really don't have that number of spots, correct?
Yep.
But I think that if we say with the chapter two fifty-five that all parking shall be on site, then unless they have an alternative parking area and they've arranged for traffic safety to walk people across the street, I mean, that's why we depend, we say that the parking spaces have to be this size and you have to show us on a plan that you have the number of spaces for the number of people, and then I think there should be a clause in the application that says that they're signing that all cars have to be parked on site, so they have to schedule the event accordingly, they only know. Because it's crazy what's happening out there.
I'm, I'm in agreement with you, but, but what I'm saying is, a lot of these events will be, we're changing, the, what we used to have in two fifty-five was, is, it was any, the number of people at any one time, and then the parking was based on the number of people at any one time, not on the total number for the event, correct?
Exactly.
Right, and so now we are changing that to require them, the way it's written now, we're requiring them to have the amount of parking available, one, one spot for every four people over the entire day's event. So if you have twelve hours of event and you're gonna have twenty-five hundred people come in that twelve hours, you now have to have parking for all twenty-five hundred people, which I don't think is realistic.
That doesn't make sense.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's not real, so I think that in the application, they still should be required to have the max per hour and then our parking code should still be for the max per hour, I think otherwise it would.
Or, or per wave, because if, you know, it takes two hours to get through an obstacle course, then they're gonna schedule however many parking spaces, a hundred parking spaces for four hundred people to be able to go through in that two hour wave with anticipation of the people that are in the next wave coming in halfway through, or, you know, right before, so, like, the, I agree, the parking calculation needs to be.
Yeah, they have to peak attendance.
Peak attendance, yeah, peak attendance per, on an, yeah.
Generally, you know, we get site plans like this one, which show the parking area here. It doesn't show the number of stalls or anything else like that, it's a, it's a large field, so when we go there, we're basically looking to see that we have good access for ambulances and fire departments to pull down the lines of cars if they need to. I don't really get involved in counting up how many and trying to figure out whether they have enough or not.
Has that been an issue with the?
Most of the time, no, most of these places that have done them before have a pretty good idea how many people that are coming. The places I see issues where we get an application that says it's maybe three thousand people, then they find out that they have to do the long form and all of a sudden that three thousand people, oh no, we'll only have nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and then when you get there, the place is overcrowded because they have the three thousand people, they just didn't wanna do, and that's where we run into issues.
They're three thousand people. But somebody like that, right, because anybody who, who does it, does that, if they come in for an event the next year, I think they get denied and I think that's in our code, so I think that has to be clearly communicated, any event that, that does that is not, will not be allowed to have the event following year.
I usually let Laura know if we've had issues.
I was gonna say. So then. Yeah, we are, we talk all the time.
Yeah, that would go back after them and make them pay the higher fee because they had a over expended, uh, expected.
We can do that too.
And honestly, sometimes it's difficult the first time or two.
Sure, yeah, understandable.
Somebody has something to estimate the number of people.
But if someone does it on a regular basis, maybe we should do it two times and go out and have them pay the higher fee.
I agree, I mean, some people just honestly don't know and if they're trying to do the right thing.
We give them one pass.
We give, yeah, we do our best to work with them.
Can we go back to two fifty-five six, density on private property, it's the number of persons, uh, certainly, a density of not more than three hundred people per acre. Do you wanna read that? Three hundred people per acre, so if you have nine hundred people, we need three acres?
But it's a private property, it's a private party, right, this, is this, this is.
Yeah, this is private, it's not public.
This, this would not be open to the public, it would be invite only and everybody would have to know everybody that's there, it's not, it's not advertised.
Right. Okay. Well, that's, that's, it's private.
I mean, it's a, you know.
Mm-hmm, yep.
It's a wedding right there.
Yeah.
And we need to add food vendors to the definitions, we discussed that last time, but I don't see food vendor in the definition.
I think something on food vendor, but, hold on one second, so we're gonna look at my notes. Well, what we had said is the food vendor's application must be received, it permits no less than fourteen days, otherwise there's a late fee of one hundred and we, we had said that we were not gonna codify that, so we have to put that, like.
Well, you just wanna put a definition of what a food vendor is, it's somebody that's in a, you know, portable facility, that's selling products and abiding by Suffolk County Form and Alloysive Regulations when it ends obtaining the necessary permits.
Okay, I will add that to definitions.
Like just this definition of what a food vendor is, so let's go here.
I just out of curiosity, they wanna look at, um, for noise ordinance, they're all given a copy of that?
They're not giving a copy of the noise ordinance, so we can, we can include a copy of the noise and this being part of the application process.
Maybe we should just, but the noise ordinance kicks in after eleven P M., right? So, most of these events are not going to pass eleven P M., I mean, that, in our history, we've really limited it to eleven P M. for those purposes.
I could decode sign in time anyway.
All right, unless there's anybody that wants to go backwards, we did end last at two fifty-five ten.
What are you even saying?
Well, I'm just going through and checking to make sure that all the changes that we made last time.
We can go back if you want, if you wanna go from the front and just see what's underlying.
Cause then we, yeah.
I just, do you wanna go back?
Never mind, we'll go.
All right, so just, just still under the previous one, nine for D for number fourteen, I think we had gone over this, but I just, I just wasn't, um, sure for the, for the, it says the town board may require applicant, applicant to contract, to contact, to contract for its own medical and ambulance services.
Where are you at?
I am on two fifty-five dash nine, uh, number D, letter D, uh, point fif- fourteen.
That's for the runs when they get hurt.
So, but, but that's not the town board, that, who does that generally, cause do we determine, is that brought to the town board before anything?
Usually it's fire marshal, usually.
Okay, so.
Right, Craig?
I was, I was just reading it.
Okay.
Yeah, um, when I review them, the, the things based on past experience that have had numerous injuries and so forth, I will require that they have EMS on standby at the event, so a lot of these survival runs, the mud runs, things like that, um, I'll have them, I'll make them have an ambulance, you know, and in, in this, it talks about EMS if it's required and they can go to the local volunteers and if they would care to have, you know, do it, then they can make arrangements, I just, I just need to know that, you know, Riverhead ambulance or Waiting River, whoever is.
Gonna cover it?
Gonna cover it, and if they decline, um, then I generally will require that they have paid ambulance service, one, sometimes two, on site. And again, the idea is just to cut down on the amount of calls that, because now we're having this big event which may produce, you know, numerous injuries or people needing to be transported and now the ambulance corps already got around forty-five hundred alarms last year and so now we're adding significantly to their, to their workload.
You say they were triaged, but they wouldn't transport?
We had that a couple of times where the paid ambulance service triaged on site and treated and then called Riverhead ambulance to come in. And that's why I'll require too, and I'll say, listen, your, your job here is to treat and transport, you get a mass casualty, obviously call, activate the nine-one-one system and get everybody there that you need, but the idea, yeah, your, your, your job is to relieve some of the workload from the ambulance corps.
Right, and you make that recommendation to the town board and the town board adopts a resolution requiring them to provide their own ambulance service.
Well, that's in there underneath the, um, it's part of my public safety plan that they've gotta do, which requires EMS.
Right, but I think the supervisor was referring to D fourteen, nine D fourteen, which says the town board may require applicants to contract for its own medical and or ambulance services, so are you questioning whether it should be the town board or the fire marshal?
No, I guess, I was wondering who determines and it just gets classified in the resolution.
Got it.
Okay, that's, that's, that's.
All right, yeah.
Okay, okay, so it's fine.
And then also number eighteen, if they're displaying signs, do they need a building sign permit?
A lot of times they do, like if it goes across, um, Main Street or Fifty-Eight, there'll be something from the state, it depends on where it is.
Cause we just had it at the town, so they'll be notified of that also, cause we didn't have town in there, right, we just had county, state, we had the town.
Right.
So they need to know that.
Okay.
And then my other question is, uh.
But the town doesn't have permitting processes for temporary signs, so we don't have temporary signs in our town code.
Town used to give them for like, um, the Moose Car Classic up at, I think it was something.
I was checking our town code to make sure because, you know, I mean, I, I remember when Roadhouse Pizza first opened and they put a temporary sign up and they got hit with a violation notice because they had a temporary sign while they were waiting for their permanent sign, so I didn't know that we had a process for temporary signs.
Sider House still has their temporary sign.
So, Tapper, maybe you can look at that with full revision?
Yes, um, and then for nineteen, do we go back and check to make sure that the site was in its original condition? Or is that just the landowners?
That should be the landowners, I guess would.
It should be the landowner unless it's the town.
And then they would have to go, unless it's town property.
Right.
So do we need that in there then? Isn't that the responsibility of them with whoever they're renting from or the person that owns the property?
We could take it out, it doesn't hurt to leave it in.
Okay, but we're not responsible for it?
No, it doesn't say we are.
Okay.
And then I had an objection by the town clerk.
Diane's favorite part.
Yeah. I didn't know if, if this is something that you want to go along with, but as it says, the, the town about leave, uh, Southampton did include this in their special event code, so I mean, you're the first person to go through that and actually goes.
My concern is like sometimes they come in and say they have forty days and they're coming in on the fortieth day and it's incomplete and you send them away, then they're coming back with a late application, so it's sort of that, that narrow time period there. And is it acceptable, like if they come in a little bit late, like in the past we've always said, well, you can, you can have the sign, you can, the town board sign off, if you get three members of the town board to sign off, to okay that, if you still wanna do that or you don't?
Template, I thought we were gonna come up with a template, but they say that we realize that we're late in our application and we are not going, you know,
the application may be denied because it's late, so, and then.
Right. So with the template, we would still have that process by which the town board may or may not.
But I still think if they come in with an application on forty days out and it's incomplete, you could.
That's not an application.
Send them to me.
That's what you did.
Not a problem, I, I think if you just advise them, look, this application's incomplete, you can stamp it pending, which means that they somewhat came in on time, but they're gonna be charged that daily late fee until they get a credit.
Is that what we wanna do?
I think that's, I, I think that's, yeah, that's not what we're talking about, yeah, I mean, Laura, you'll address this, because everybody, everybody then, once you take that application,
That's what we talked about.
No.
They think that, that their event is going on.
You're so true.
Right, that's what we said.
I'll get something Thursday and the event is Saturday, I call, their voicemail is full, they don't return my phone call, they don't respond to emails. Sometimes it's very laborious.
It's, 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 yeah, it's very laborious, yeah.
Cancel, modify.
I thought we discussed this and we decided we were not going to allow that.
Okay, well, are we doing the template though, because that's not a bad idea, I really kinda think that's.
I thought we decided we were.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna give them a letter that their application is incomplete and, and.
So we're just gonna create the template.
Double the fee.
And make, double, they'll, they'll be given the fee, the new fee schedule, when their application is complete, they can come back in and at that point it'll be decided whether it's accepted or not.
Should we take a copy of their application?
I would take the copy.
Cause I think you would need to see what it's all about.
But, but I think we were gonna have them sign the letter, that it was, that it, while they, while they dropped the application off, it was not accepted at this point, it's pending. Yep. Whatever, you know, whatever you want.
You better time frame on that then, you have seven days to get a completed application here or something like that?
That's also a consideration that.
That would be in the template, which we would have to discuss because it's, and, and I agree with making a copy of the application because, and Craig and I talked about this in the parking lot after work session last week, because, you know, you'd, if it's a thousand or fifteen hundred people and there's just not enough time to review and to get all the food vendors and to do everything, then you just deny it, but at least the template and taking the application in will know what type of event it is, unless I think some, someone had the idea that you put the minimal requirement as to number of people, food service, alcohol, and then don't take the application, but at least you'll have the basic information on the application as to whether or not, and then within seven days if they complete the application.
I would give them forty-eight hours.
Yeah, whatever it's.
I would, yeah, forty-eight hours, after forty-eight hours, the application will be disposed of.
Yep.
Two business days.
Two business days.
Two business days, because if it falls on a Friday.
And that's it.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
For getting all this.
You were saying you'll come in on a Friday, right before four o'clock.
Oh, yeah, sometimes, yeah, and Craig, you can attest to this, sometimes it's so, it's like some last minute.
Craig, when, when, inspecting my tent, I just put it out there.
Oh, my gosh.
Your tent started already.
So on this letter, this template that is gonna come from the town clerk for late filed applications, you basically wanna say we'll take it, but it could, if, this is, acceptance is not, doesn't mean approval.
We have not, we are not accepting, your, your, your application has been deemed late under the, the town code for accepting applications. You have forty-eight hours to return the complete information for this application or will we deemed, you know, denied?
Is that for incomplete or is that for late or both?
Both.
I say both, how about be like the cover page to your application?
Yeah.
And it, it's not completed, you take that off, hand them back and.
Sign it, tell them to sign it and.
Right, sign it.
And this way we're not holding on to any incomplete applications, more than two days, we're not holding on to any applications that are late more than two days, they'll just.
And then it goes, the, uh, the template goes to the town board and you're all aware and can sign off, is it something?
Well, we wouldn't sign off on it because until the application is brought in incomplete, oh, a late application.
Right, right, so if you've got, yeah, so then you would be either signing off or denying or whatever.
Well, it would have to come through the next work session and at the next work session, if it's, if, if it can be done at the next work session, it gets decided on, yes or no, to accept the application or not, and then it goes back in the queue for the process.
But that was part of the problem, because sometimes we'll skip a work session where we don't have a work session for two weeks and then, but, you know, if it's a thirty day, you've already missed out on two weeks.
Yeah, but our, our applications have changed now to what, sixty days, ninety days and a hundred and twenty days, so if they're coming in thirty days, is it really our obligation to accommodate them?
I know, but I don't know that in here it says, it says late fees, but it doesn't say forty-eight hours or two business days to get the information in, otherwise it's denied.
Well, forty-eight hours would be incomplete, right?
We wanna do that because then express concerns with other things that happen, such as the James Ford Fire Department and other venues that have come in that have been late, so we wanna say, okay, it's more than forty-eight hours or two business days denied, so that's why I think that the template would be good if they were to specify the number of people and just the basic information about, and give them back their application, but the base, and I think Jim came up with that, just put the basic information on the template that.
Is it enough for you though, with just the very basic information or are there other?
You don't know alcohol, food, food vendors, if you need please, what day it is, how many people are attending.
Oh, I don't think that's, yeah, no, right.
Right, and basically, and contact information.
But at least we would have a signed document from them saying that the application is late and I realize that the town board may deem it denied because it's late, so we'll review the information even though it's late, but it could still be denied.
And will we have a late fee?
Pending approval by the town board, the application is, is, is not accepted, and then they'll, they'll have to wait to hear from us.
Right.
I think you said yes, and we're doing a late fee, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I think that the late fees need to be, and we discussed last time, the late fees need to be more on the time that's going to be allocated to fit into their schedules to process this application, not ten cents a day or ten dollars a day, whatever it was.
No, twenty dollars, twenty dollars a day.
You know, because if we're getting an application in late and it requires a lot of review, where Craig's putting all of his other work aside and he's working on this specific application for eight hours, then, you know, other work is not getting done.
And that's what we do a lot.
That's what happens a lot of times.
That's what we do a lot, so other work to decide.
We can, that's why I say, put the application as pending till it's reviewed by the town board, then you guys don't have to do anything until it shows up at a work session and the town board says, yes, you can, can process it or no, you can't process it.
Or you say that the late fee will be based on overtime for the employees to be able to review it. And then you just bill on the overtime rate for the employees.
But you know what, you get a lot of things in on Friday afternoon that are happening on, on, on the following Friday that require every, you know, everything comes in Friday four o'clock.
Keep it simple though, keep it simple when it comes to these late fees, okay?
I don't know, like a ten dollars a day is ridiculous, it, it means nothing.
So what do you think it should be, fifty dollars a day?
No, I think it should be based on their time for the.
That sounds complicated to figure out.
Keep it simple, they're already gonna pay, automatically they're all paying fifty dollars because the insurance is not gonna come until thirty days before, and so, everybody's gonna get fifty bucks and on top of the application.
Yeah, everybody has their insurance, that's.
But insurance doesn't have to come thirty days before, they can, instead of getting, staying with their annual policy, if they really want the event, they can go to the special and get a one day.
But even your annual policy, you can do your annual policy for one day, you just call them up and say, I want the insurance, can you, can you indemnify the town for this day, for this twenty-four hours?
Yeah, but a lot of insurance companies want that, they don't give it out that far in advance.
Right.
Oh, yes, they do, you, you can get it much further than that from insurance company, you can get it up to a year in advance, for a specific date.
Well, I can. Well, I can tell the accountant to do that.
They do know that, because I've only done it a hundred times and.
But I've done it, they won't give it to you, they'll only give it to you thirty days in advance?
As they get closer to the event, they will, they're not gonna give it to you six months advance.
Thirty days out.
I, we had this discussion too, and I agreed with you, Jim, but.
I thought that was the vendors.
Supervisor said that the insurance company will issue it, so maybe we can get clarification up on that, maybe I'll call a local insurance company and say, hey, will you give, um, somebody an insurance policy for March fifth even though it's October?
For a one day event.
For a one day event.
I know if you Google one day event insurance, there's a lot of.
You get it from Florida, they're like a couple hundred bucks.
Really, even with alcohol?
Not with alcohol.
No, not with alcohol, okay, but most of our events do have alcohol.
I would say seventy-five, I think, yeah, you're right, mm-hmm.
Right. So.
All right, take it.
We did it that, but, um, I'll say, oh, you know what, so the application's ten days late, so they'll pay an extra two hundred bucks, that's the thing that rubs me because then these guys are scrambling to get it done.
And what they say as well is that, well, I don't wanna go and spend fifteen hundred dollars on insurance and then my event is not gonna be approved.
Exactly.
It's kinda like catch twenty-two, do I get approved and then get insurance and hope I get it in time? That's why when we push it back, we get the six months.
But if the event, if the event, if the event hasn't occurred, their insurance company will not let them cancel the insurance if the event is to not occur?
Maybe, it could be prorated from the day they got it.
But they only get it for one day, they only get the insurance for one day, they don't get the insurance for like a year, they get the, unless they're, they do events all the time. Other than that, they get the insurance for one day, you call up the insurance company, say, I'm having an event on Tuesday at nine o'clock and attending at five o'clock, can you indemnify the town and can I have insurance for that one day, they say, sure.
But that's if you have an existing policy with them.
Nope, nope, nope.
Well, how do they know that you're not a mass murderer and you're having an event for children or a pedophile or?
They still insure you.
Pretty much don't care as long as you're paying.
They don't care as long as you pay your insurance.
You don't pay for the insurance.
Well, I know we care, when people wanna do things on our property, we make sure that they have the background check and everything else that we require if they do it on town property.
A lot, I would say maybe eighty percent they're recurring, but there are that twenty percent that are brand new and they may not ever have insurance before. You know, like they, they've never done this before, at least not with us, with the town, a lot of them I see all the time and they're usually annual because they have so many events per year.
And then they just pick the date that they're having the event and they identify the town for that one date, they have an umbrella policy for a full year.
So just confirm that with, uh, an insurance company, any insurance company that you see coming in.
It's not an umbrella policy.
It's, it's a year policy for events, it's, yeah, it's a little cheaper than buying the one day event, but.
It's an annual, yeah. Okay.
Uh, okay.
We got that, all right, is there any other questions or should we go to two fifty-five ten?
I just have on, oh, we are two, okay, yeah, no, that's fine. I just have for, for two fifty-five ten B.
Yeah.
Um, where you have the applicant shall submit notification from the insurance twenty-four hours in advance.
Twenty-four is too, too tight, seventy-two.
Okay, so, seventy-two, we're gonna make that.
Yep.
And then the other, my other question for that is, that is rest solely with the applicant, so if that, you do not receive that seventy-two hour in advance, is the event canceled?
No, because they're not gonna do it.
But this is what I'm saying, let's take the onus off of us, so if they do not, if this is not delivered seventy-two hours before the event, then they, they either pay a whopping fee or the event gets canceled, because if they're coming in twenty-four, forty-eight hours in advance, they should, because nobody's gonna appear to the seventy-two hours unless you're calling them up, hounding them for it, if there's no penalty for it.
That's exactly right.
So, I mean, what, what do you think would be the penalty so that people actually do it? I would do two hundred fifty dollars.
I was just gonna say two hundred or two fifty.
Yeah.
What do they do with that?
As long as you check with the insurance companies and the insurance companies are saying, we'll give you the certificate seventy-two hours before the event.
Well, where, would they, they're required to have it thirty, thirty days before, you're just verifying it seventy-two hours before.
I, I just wanna check with the insurance companies, that's all, I'm an insurance salesperson, so I don't know what their requirements are or not, especially if it's a one-time event, so I've never had an event before and I wanna have an event on my property and I've never had insurance before and I call up the insurance company and say, hey, I wanna have this event where I'm gonna have five hundred people come and they're gonna be running through obstacles at the four H camp, will you give me insurance for October thirtieth? And the insurance company's gonna go, who are you and where do you live and what's your, you know?
But you'd still have to have that done thirty days before because it, that the, if you don't have that certificate in thirty days before, then your event is canceled.
Understood, but, understood, but I just, if we're gonna be taking it late.
No, 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 this isn't taking, like it's verification, this is just verification that it's still, it's still, still in effect.
App, applicant shall submit notification from their insurance company seventy-two hours in advance of the event to verify insurance.
It's just, it's just making sure it's still. It's just, it's just making sure it's still in in effect.
Right, and it could still cancel twenty-four hours before.
Right, or twelve hours before.
Exactly.
I hope everybody's listening, don't be late with your application.
Can I?
That's the bottom line.
If you're late, it's your tough luck.
And just bring a blank check because it's, the number's gonna add up quickly.
Well, no, it actually is not bad if you get everything in on time, it's it's reason, very reasonable to have an event here in Rearhead. It's it's when, it's when the things aren't on time that it becomes, you know, a challenge.
They're in on time. That's right.
Because it forces the town to have to scramble to get the services they're taking.
And to verify that there aren't other events on the same exact day that are impacting the police department or the fire marshal or the ambulance.
Well, I know like Dan McCormick of our office, he's now putting the hunting season on, uh, on our, our Google map that everyone can get the, you know, the password and username. This way now when I do a chapter two fifty-five, I can see I'm not in the middle of a wolf hunting season.
We're not putting him in the middle of the bow hunting. I didn't even think of that, you're right, yeah.
If I didn't get that phone call, you know.
Yeah, we never, none of us thought of that.
That's valid, yeah, yeah.
She said there's signs everywhere and I'm like, oh, pulled up, you know, so that's why I immediately came and saw, um, Dan and, uh, Karen.
Yeah, right.
Good catch.
Okay, so the next is is C, cost reimbursement. Where, and I added the expected number of persons or the duration of the special event may impact the health, it's really just like a cleanup. Safety where as a condition of the granting of this special event or parade, the town may require the committee to reimburse the cost, the town for cost of increased police protection. So that's like what we do now for our, um, the police assistance, the police and vehicular use, you know, to to, uh, control craft, the traffic on the intersections. They get an actual agreement now and they have to give me insurance and they also have to give me the compensation fee, which I get the numbers from the police department, which calculates based on the rates at the time of the event.
Now, do you keep track, like if somebody has to, if you have us to have extra police on for an event and you end up doing overtime at the end of the week because they they've maxed out, how is that calculated?
If they've maxed out, you're gonna have someone in and they're at their forty hours, now they're forty-eight hours.
Well, not necessarily for the event, so say you have, you know, say you you go Sunday to Saturday, right, so so you you call in three extra officers on Sunday, right, to do, to do the the event.
Right.
So now by by Thursday, they've finished their forty hours, um, do you have to end up paying people overtime to cover your regular shifts?
It wouldn't work that way.
No.
The only reason they ever get called in on straight time would be like a try and make up day or something like that.
Okay, so it all be, everything's straight time, nobody's getting over.
But I'm not adjusting the schedule to cover it.
Okay.
Turning in on that day. Right, the the charts that we put into place eight years ago, nine years ago have payback days involved where officers can utilize their time paying back. Cause we recognize fair, the Polish fair, standalone events that we know we need police coverage, so we adjust the schedule so that they owe, most of the nighttime police officers owe the town like eight days, so we use them.
Okay.
Is there a fee scheduled for that?
Uh, it would be just the time that they that they work it.
They're late to pay.
And they're thinking we would ask.
It would be their way to pay for the, the big hours performed, they owe the town time.
It depends on who the individual was doing it, so let's say you have two events on that day, your event is in first, you have a TCO officer, that's that's cost, is is is, you know, their salary's less than yours is gonna maybe be less than your neighbor, what you paid for the event because then the officer, yeah.
Right, well, the, people in the ID committee have been asking for fee schedule.
And that's why we calculate it at the highest rate because it could wind up being the highest rate.
Correct.
I got the language from Bill Rofel on cost reimbursement, it says applicants will be billed based on the hourly salary and fringe benefit rate of the employee at the time of the event.
Yeah.
So that's what I I called Bill Rofel and I said.
And usually people ask like, you know, well, am I getting a TCO or am I getting a police officer? And if there's already an event scheduled for that day, we, all the TCOs are out, then you can at least tell them you're getting a P O.
Getting a police officer.
Right.
And this is what it's gonna cost. Because they always ask for that number upfront.
Okay, and the next, M D, we didn't change anything, it's basically that we can ask them to give us some kind of security for cleanup. So it's good to keep that in there, we usually don't, but some of these big events, like maybe some of these five Ks that put up these obstacles, you may wanna do have them post some kind of security. You know, just to make sure and that, and it'll be released, it'll go in an account that's refundable, um, and and, you know, but that would have to be on a case-by-case basis. So I guess between us, we can say maybe we should address the town board and see if they want to accept, you know, ask for security for this for cleanup.
Any physical change in the, in the, in the, uh, in the, in the area?
Well, even now with at Epcal, we have remnants of.
Isn't it the mud race that was the problem?
Five K that's on already and if we had money, we could either say you can't get your money back if you move it or we have the money to have it removed.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's like a, like anything else.
But that's in here already.
Yeah, it is, I'm just saying that, you know, to keep that, I didn't change it, so I don't wanna just skip over everything, I I guess we're trying to clean up the whole thing, you know?
Rodeo confirmed it, all that responding money.
We just didn't do it last time.
Yeah, no, no, we really haven't.
Well, he was diagnosed with leukemia, I think, and in the hospital for like months where he, it was impossible for him to get out of the hospital.
Yeah, no, no, right. Yes.
That was good.
Oh, no, 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 I, no, I, that's, that's not it, I mean, just getting a bonding beforehand if you change your phys- physical structure of town property.
Just in general, you know, like if. If we had a big, you know, like a a Quincy Western Fair that's gonna have five thousand people, I would think you wanna have something in place on town property.
Just be planting grass or whatever.
Town property, of course, not private property, that's their, it's only for town.
I think cause there's also been questions about having places mowed on a schedule that may not be within the mowing schedule, things like that, that have been requested and how the days get addressed.
Someone just asked for a mowing that is huge, huge, and we said, no, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna, like, use taxpayers' money to do this. If you wanna do it, you can do it, but then we want an indemnification, we wanna protect ourselves against it.
We're gonna take up the union also.
What?
Cause our union employees mow the grass, so you can't use outside mowing companies to come in.
You can't use outside mowers.
Well, they're not gonna, buildings and grounds and highway will not do it, we've already checked.
Okay, so.
That's not gonna be an issue because they're not gonna do it.
Should, should that, should D indicate that that's for town property only?
Um, because there's a cleanup if the property isn't bad, it's not gonna be a need, I mean, yeah, we could add that, some may require the other provision to secure supplying to conditions to commit, um, for an event to be.
But you know what, you might wanna leave it there just in case there's a big event and there's trash that stays out there and we have to do an extra trash pickup or something like that.
On private property?
For, like just, like the roadside stuff for com- well, no, because they have, they have their own commercial, yeah, you're right, okay.
So for an event.
Or parking on town, town, you know what I mean, if they're parking on a roadway, then, you know.
So you can go allow it to my property.
Don't park.
Working on that.
Okay. We go to the special event permit is sent to the actual resolution. Now, this is where you may wanna discuss verification of payment, someone like, um, that's a not-for-profit, but they said, this is on the next page, F, I'm sorry, two fifty-five-ten F.
Oh, yes, right, yeah, this is what we talked about.
Well, that's, that's a fine, right?
If the applicant isn't a not-for-profit and they said, but we're gonna give X amount of proceeds to the veterans. Other towns say, okay, we'll, we'll give you a break or we'll make it not-for-profit for you, like we won't charge you the application fee, but we wanna see a cancel check of who you gave it to. I don't know if you want this in here, it really hasn't been much of an issue so far.
This is for pro- for profit.
For profit saying they're gonna give money to a not-for-profit.
I think this is what we were talking about before when I had said not-for-profit, but it is the for-profit, so if somebody's advert- advertising themselves in our community that they're a for-profit company saying, I'm gonna give to the veterans and come to this event and they're promoting the event and then it turns out that they walked away with all the money.
Right. Right.
So this would, this is is a prevention of that.
Four years, twenty-five dollars.
What, or they gave them twenty-five dollars, exactly.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, most times it's a not-for-profit that's raising either for themselves or another not-for-profit, it's like the most.
But this wouldn't apply to them.
No, this would not apply, it's only this.
I would probably change the verb used to for-profit.
It does say that.
Well, it does, but it says they have not a charitable.
So it's better said.
I like that way, okay.
But, okay, so.
A for-profit applicant.
So if I'm reading that, I'm gonna say, okay, the proceeds are all going to me and I'm gonna pay the fees and I'm.
That is a for-profit organization.
And then if I decide to donate to a charity, that'll be on my own volition and that, not because.
But we've been formed plan before, so.
Well, I remember with the Fold concert, there was a lot of, um, donations that were supposed to go out to different people that didn't make it, quite make it there.
Well, this is the town is not money for this. The town wouldn't be out money for that.
The town wouldn't be out money for that, but we're allowing them to promote themselves in a particular way in our town.
I give it to your court one year and then they give it to rec the other year or something like that. Oh, I, I know that, I I realize that, but I mean, it it that, the application fees and pay, oh, it's something paid for this particular event, so the town's made whole. It's only something after the event whether they give their donation or not. But they give their donation, well, I could see if they're giving it to a town organization, but if they're giving it to, you know, the spotted owl of Alaska, I mean.
Okay, this next one, G, notification of adjoining property owners in residential zoning districts, again, this is language from another township, but sometimes, especially Craig, I think with the fireworks permit application, which is in a chapter two fifty-five though, we have to notify the horse farms because of the loud, you know, they spook out and, you know, so. I don't know if if like if someone's gonna have something with loud music that we're permitting that doesn't exceed the decibels that's permitted in our town code. Maybe you wanna tell, because this is in residential areas, maybe you wanna tell the adjoining property owners that they're gonna have this, but you know, the property owners probably don't say they don't want it, but, so you may not, you may not want this, this was just.
More work for you just to check it, make sure and then notify the adjoining property owner and then did they.
And then the other thing is. And how much prior notice?
Then the property owners are gonna come in and they're gonna say, we hate it, don't let them have the event and then we're gonna.
That's the town.
Start neighborhood disputes.
So why don't we just take that out?
Then the police are gonna pull out overtime.
Well, you know what we can do, we can have them, we can have them post it. They can maybe have to post it on a, you know, seven days, seven days before, well, they pay for them, we don't have, we don't have to pay for it.
We would have to provide the posters.
No.
Have something made up and they just have to post it seven days before on the property that they'll be having an event. I mean, I I mean, I don't think it it's necessary for someone that's like two hundred, five hundred, but if you're having something that, I mean, do we have anything that's two thousand people or more that's next to some neighbors that are neighbors?
In residential, yeah.
So I don't know who you're, like, it's not that close, I mean, the town.
I thought about work, the horse farms, but that's not a chapter two fifty-five, that's a fireworks permit application, so.
Can you guys think of any place where this would be applicable here?
Might have been at the Fold concert when they had that, but I think Fold, that was part of the discussion was notifying all the surrounding property owners and everything ahead of time and. Yeah, that, and that was.
We had, what about Martha Clara?
But we had several, like, work sessions and meetings about the Fold concert before it actually happened.
Yeah, no, that was very well publicized.
How about we just do events that are greater than, greater than twenty-five hundred people?
At residential area?
It's not gonna happen, but then this way you still have the ability, if you have a Fold concert, to require them to notify people. So you're not.
We definitely need that in there for the traffic because that's what they complain about a lot, that they weren't notified, that there's a ten K going on or something like that and the roads might be closed and stuff.
We said they should advertise that in the paper.
Yeah, but if a ten K, and even if they did notify budding property owners and across the street, how does that affect everybody else on the town?
But then that's, that's what this is.
No, I'm talking about a little more, further than that, like message boards that go out and say, you know, this road will be impacted by a ten K on this date kinda thing. Like we did for Alive on Twenty-Five, we had the machines out there early, so they knew that the road was gonna be closed on Thursday. Well, I think the iconic day medical center did that too, they posted that they were having the events.
Signs, signs everywhere, signs.
The Sorby Festival added up on Thursday.
So, but do we wanna, I mean, we could just do it on the town website so that people know they have access to it, we can post road closures or we could post something else so that people know for events.
We could do that.
That that might be.
We wanted to do that, though.
That would have to be the applicant that makes up the whatever, fill out the paperwork so that we can, we can do, it's not an advertisement for their event, but.
Yeah, but who's gonna actually post it on the.
They could post it to my office, they would just have to fill out road closure this day, this time, I mean, it's it's not, because they have to do with the give or give, they have to fill out that information for you anyhow.
There you go, John. Says pass.
Right, so you have all the information of the road closure.
You do press releases for road closures, don't you?
We do.
So it could be done that way.
So for every event, you do press releases for road, no, that's what I'm saying.
The hell do we do the press?
No, but I mean, how many events do we have?
I get a lot of complaints from this, I get a lot of, I get a lot of complaints in the office when there's a race and something's closed for a couple hours and the community wasn't notified or a parade or a bike ride, you know, even if the road isn't closed.
Or parade or something, right, yeah. Mass time, something like that.
No, I know, but, but those you could do press releases for, when it's on town roads and we're closing the road from, because we did it with the church, when the, we were having the events for the church. We said, you know, during church hours when people are getting to and from church, we got a lot of complaints for that too, over at Saint Isador where roads were closed off because there was a parade.
Right, yeah, but sometimes that's not a road closure, that's a bike event and then they're riding through, so they stop traffic to let some bikes go across and people get upset that they.
It was a parade.
Played the mask kinda like.
It was a parade that they couldn't get to.
All right, so we need to work on this a little, let's just, it, you know what, maybe just leave this in here, but keep a, keep a file so we know what what it is we really have to notify. So like just go through the events for the next, you know, six months and let's see what we should have notified and then we can tweak that too.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, but I think when there's a road closure or something that's happening on the town, then there's a, right, so if we're closing a road for a parade or an event, I think, I mean, there's, there's not that many.
There's a road closure, we could have. Right.
You can put out a press release and the media does a great job at at letting people know that the road's gonna be closed because of this, because of an event.
So if you're talking about like the Memorial Day parade.
Yeah.
We don't put a closure out for that, that's that's moving through, so it's closed for whatever time it takes to walk.
I know, but. Half hour, or the homecoming parade that's gonna be.
Not even. It's closed here, it's an open air and it's just around where the parade is moving.
Right, so that's where you'd put the notice, you know, uh, traffic warning today, parade will start in such a, such a street and end at such and such a time.
Parade is there.
That, I mean, you don't have to say road closures, you don't say, but you just notify in the public that that it's there.
Right.
But the next paragraph is already in the code and it basically says the same thing.
Cause then you gotta put something in here too that says that the signs shall be removed promptly after the event and if it's not, then we will remove it for you and charge you two hundred dollars and then you gotta collect the money or you gotta collect the money upfront to make sure that the signs are taken down afterwards.
Ah, you know.
All right, that event is canceled.
It it already happened, the time is still up for a month, you know, it's like, I don't know, I just don't like the signs.
So again.
Well, posting it on a website's not a bad thing, at least we can tell the civics and stuff, you know, check their website kinda thing.
To look on there and we can send it out to them.
And if they have a message sheet in their application, this is what we want the message to be, they, we just terrible.
Cause that's what we're doing now, because we, every time we get something and we know something's going on, we're trying to let the civics know because they're calling and and saying that they're not notified that there's events going on in their, in their community, so it's become a bit of an issue.
Yeah, people know. Right.
So any events that are going to be included on any kind of private roads.
Public roads.
Public roads, I mean, then they, we really should either have something on the website or a press release with the police department, is that what we're?
You could have a template for a letter and then if you just fill in the dates saying that the event is gonna be from this time to this time on this date and they have to send a certified return receipt requested back to the clerk.
I have to run, I have a meeting at one. Yeah, right.
Are you doing this template or mine, Diane? We're getting two templates now.
I know, we're, we're, we're gonna have lots of them. It's a template and and it's either to the, whatever civic association or organization it is and then.
Do we encourage people to go on to do e-notifications? We do it all the time in my office, if people call about things, we encourage them to sign up for e-notifications so they could be.
Not that, not that much, but we we should get the next town board meeting, I'll write up a something and we can do that, yeah.
Yeah. We always tell the husband, he'll get an email about.
Events or yard sales or whatever.
We put chapters of the provides on there, so they could get those emails, so, I mean, of course, that takes a while to get everybody on board with that, but just a suggestion.
Okay. That is a good idea.
I'm not getting very far very quickly, you know, resolutions still.
I know.
No, they're all two fifty-five, so, okay.
This is the, this two fifty-five is America.
So, uh, in two fifty-five eleven, review of application, if you go down to B one, I had added possible conflicts with other events and seasonal demands which may overtax or cause an undue burden on town services for parades and special events, it shall be considered if the parade or special event occurs within the thirty, within thirty calendar days of another parade or special event during a period of Memorial Day to Labor Day. That was based on our conversations with the busy, I mean, yeah.
That's pretty true.
I thought we were going to the end of October.
Okay.
So maybe they're the Columbus Day.
To Columbus Day then maybe, Columbus Day is the ninth.
Of October.
To Halloween.
No, to Halloween, yeah, that's.
Halloween.
Halloween.
What, how about to even, to even to Veterans Day, I mean, that's, that's the first week in, in November, right, kind of a second?
Okay. So let's do that on the day.
Uh, so Veterans Day is after
The eleventh.
The eleventh, the eleventh this year, uh, Monday Day is the sixth, so
Royal Day to Christmas?
I could do November first, I don't care, uh, Halloween, Veterans Day, we're still pretty busy, so
Do you wanna put Veterans Day in November first?
Well, since you put Memorial Day
I put Veterans, yeah.
Coming out here up till Thanksgiving, picking up fruits and vegetables and
Yeah.
You wanna leave Veterans Day, it's kinda, you're saying Memorial Day, so let's keep it like, a day, okay.
Yep.
So we'll change that.
Go back to Veterans Day?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we can skip it.
Don't scratch out so much.
Okay, I just added again, it's to clean up, under review of application, approval or denial, if you look at number ta, uh, B ten, it's on, um, this one doesn't really be signed by, I just added the accuracy and completeness of the information contained in the application, that's something that we've
That goes to your three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine?
Yeah.
I've seen that a lot.
Okay, then if we go to the next page, just above two fifty-five twelve, I added a, a, an E, privilege, the granting of a special permit or permit is a privilege and not a right, and may be denied in the event that the applicant fails to comply with any application provision of the chapter, or for any other reason not prohibited by law.
Or if it's something the town board doesn't like.
So it's just kinda like, it's, it's not your right, it's a, it's a privilege, I say that when the kids get their, it's a right, it's a privilege. Okay, the next one, application fees, um, the application for permits shall be accompanied by an application fee and or late application fee in amounts established uh, by resolution of the town board of the town of Riverhead, from time to time, as required by two fifty-five nine A, I just kinda, I had to
Not, it should be non-refundable. Non-refundable application.
I, 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 non-refundable, okay.
Because you want, once, as soon as you get the application, you start doing the work.
Okay, and then we skip to C.
I don't like the words time to time.
I was just gonna say the same thing, what's that time to time thing?
You wanna take it out? Well, you can do it whenever you want, it's not forever, but let's just take it out, it's, it's saying, by resolution of the town board of the town of Riverhead, as required by
As required by, as required by my name.
Okay, we'll take that out.
Time to time always gives you a little wiggle room, and I don't, I don't know whether you wanna give it.
So, okay.
Well, I love to wiggle, but it's, it's not very slightly.
Then C, late application shall incur a fee of ten dollars per day beyond the submission deadline, as set forth in two fifty-five dash nine D. If more than sixty days late, a twenty dollar per day fee will be incurred, and the application will continue to accrue late fees until D is complete.
I don't like that either, because
Another town is doing that.
It's sixty days is, one of our permit applications is sixty days, so if they submit it on day fifty-nine, we're gonna charge them
Sixty-nine.
Well, I think maybe reword that to, to actually
Just do twenty dollars per day, every day it's late.
Okay.
And then we could accept, not accept it, no application would, the
Well, they've already signed the template, that we can deny it at any time, so
But do we wanna give a, a, a cutoff date, though, so no application will be, will be acceptable at all, if thirty days prior, or forty-five days prior, whatever,
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Whatever, what is it, what is it?
Thirty days, I'd say.
Thirty days prior?
Because if we have sixty days, you know, they can pay thirty days, a twenty dollar per day, six hundred bucks, and then, you know, if it's more than thirty days late, then just don't take it.
It's not, it's not acceptable, okay.
So late application shall incur a fee of twenty per day beyond this submission deadline as set forth in two fifty-five nine D, done.
If, yeah, if more than, if, 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 if application is submitted thirty days prior to the event, it will not be accepted. Or it will be denied, whatever.
Application, what was that?
If it, if it's thirty, if they present it thirty days before the event, the application is automatically denied.
Okay. Or no application shall be approved less than thirty days prior to
I wouldn't even say accepted, I would, uh, this way, nothing, no onus is on you for any of it, it's just
Thirty days, is that for all of them?
That would be for
Long, short, or whatever?
Do we wanna do a different date for the long form, do we wanna do forty-five days for the long form, and the, thirty days for short?
Probably should, because it's, it's, they're considering
All right, so it's the forty-five for long form?
Now it's, I'm, I'm, pardon, with their, their shit, you wanna tell them they can't have it if it's like, less than thirty days?
No, but, 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 but this is a cha, a change in practice, so you know, they're gonna come and petition.
But, I think
Rules are rules.
I think that, you know, we should have a new language in there that, you know, no application will be taken less than thirty days before an event if there is need for police, need for cops, need, I mean, need for, you know
I thi, I think, you know what, this is, you will send the letter out to everybody that's doing the application. We know, we know the people that have been doing applications, um, that have sometimes handed them in late for their events that they're having. Even though they've been doing it for a very long time.
Well, I haven't.
So.
And then D, any amendment to the application for a parade or special event will be subject to an amendment fee of twenty-five percent of the applicable application fee. Amendments may include changes to the location, route, parking plan, number of people expected, et cetera. Amendments to fire safety plans or parking plans at the request of the town are not considered amendments to the application.
Okay.
I would do away with number of people expected, because if they go from five hundred to five thousand, then I would just do away with number of people expected.
Well, that would be the biggest, that would be the biggest change that would require the most work, so if somebody says they're gonna sell five hundred tickets, and now they sold twenty-five hundred tickets, that's a huge amendment, because everybody has to scramble them to change everything.
Right, but then, but it says, any amendment to the application for a parade or special permit will be subject to an amendment fee of twenty-five percent. So if they came in with an original application of five hundred people, and it was a hundred dollars, and then we're only gonna charge them twenty-five dollars, and they're increasing the people from five hundred to five thousand, it should be, they should pay whatever the cost is for the
Well, it's a different application, it would have to be a whole different application, because it's a whole nother set of guidelines.
Right. Right, but that's why I said we should take out the people, the number of expected people.
Well, but that's the one thing they could change it, that's
Out of this
Right, I, and, you know, and also
And say that it's not a twenty-five percent of the application fee, because they've already applied.
Of the applicable, app, applicable application fee, so if your application can change, changes, it's what, you'll pay whatever the new fee is, plus a twenty-five percent penalty.
So, right. It would be twenty-five percent. I think that covers it. And when you talk about amendments may include changes to the location, route, parking plan, but then on the next one, she say parking plan is not considered an amendment, so
O, only if it's because of the, if, if they had to change it because the town requests it.
We, we asked them to, not, you know, it's because we asked them to change it, it's not their fault, it's, you know, they didn't do it, we did.
Right.
Okay, so am I keeping number of people expected in, or are we taking it out?
Yes, because it's applicable application.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you gotta keep
But you have to keep that in mind too, Laura, when, if they only applied for five hundred people, and now they're going to five thousand, it's not twenty-five percent of the fee that they paid.
Right.
It's, they have to increase the fee to the five thousand people, and then pay twenty-five percent on top of
They gotta change your application altogether.
Right.
All of it, they're going for all application fee.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
You're right, you're going from twenty, you're going from, right, it's a whole different application.
It is.
That's a whole different, see, all they got.
Or coming down the home stretch.
Two fifty-five fifteen alcohol is beverage.
Yeah. Could change it, could change it, yeah.
When?
Okay, I, I know that we hand this out in the, in the actual application, but many people say, I didn't see that, they don't read all the pages. So if we, if we add it to the code, I think it's better, um, we'll still give them a copy of it in the actual application, but if providing alcohol at an event, a liquor liability insurance policy, naming the town as an additional insuring amount of two million general aggregate, and each occurrence will be required. I can't tell you how many times I get one million, uh, per occurrence, and then two million general aggregate, which is fine for just regular public general liability, but not for liquor, liquor, we need two and two, and I can remind you that our insurance company actually wanted more, but to make it cost effective, we, we agreed, or the town board agreed to two and two.
So, you're gonna change the application, so that if they check off alcohol, then it's gonna say in parentheses next to it, a two million dollar, a two, so where they check off alcohol will be served?
It's already in the application.
Right, and Stuart, it says, an insurance policy for two million must be provided?
No, there's no No, it's in the application itself, it's, in other words, when you print out an application, it's, I have it here, it's many pages, one of it is, is going to be the outdoor safety plan that you get a copy of, another one is actually the blurb of the town code is part of the application.
Yes.
It's actually, you're handed that section of the, of the code, they would be handed it.
I know, but like you said, not everybody reads the code, so if they check off the box, and it says right next to it, two million dollar insurance policy required, then they might
So you want me to add it to it?
I think that's a good idea.
I'll drink to that.
Are we on the last one? Can't be possible.
Okay, penalties for offenses, and this I was asked by our deputy town attorney to include this language. Failure to retain a special event permit as defined herein shall be an offense, and the fine shall be the applicable special event application fee, plus an amount not less than two hundred and fifty dollars nor more than one thousand dollars. Each day that such event occurs, is conducted, or otherwise takes place without a special event permit having been issued, shall be considered a separate offense. And this is because of what he deals with in justice court now, you know, he really doesn't have the teeth in the code to to charge his fees. So, this was asked by our office to include that as far as justice court for offenders, but I, hey.
I like it.
I like it.
Yep, good.
Good work.
Yeah, thank you very much.
That's a lot of work.
A long time coming.
Yeah, it is, it really
That's why it took so long, right.
It's been needed for a long time, but it was
And you know, the events have changed too, I mean, years ago, this was fine, but it's, it's not like that anymore.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's something new.
Yes.
No, this was just, uh, last time they
Yeah, do you wanna present with this?
Yeah, there's just copies of some of the, uh, better site plans that we get, I think you've all seen, some of the other ones, I can't even read them, a lot of times, and I end up calling people up and asking them to email it to me directly, but
Didn't bring the napkins in, huh?
These are just copies, um, you know, the, a couple of ones we've done, where you see an, an overall site plan, and then on the second page is a, a close-up showing where everything is.
We will hand that out with the application.
Yeah, we have one now, but it's not, it's not a good, it's not a good sample, no, yeah, this, this will put in the new application.
Yeah, these are just samples. Yeah. I can email them to you if you want.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Oh, boy, finally, the same, the same with us, you just kinda
Okay, so they merit each other?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll email you.
Very good.
You guys are the best, and we'll change this again, probably another few hundred times, I'm sure.
Thank you.
No, we will not, good job with the sample diagram.
Yeah, we're killing a lot of trees, but we've got at least probably two more of these until we're done with this thing, I bet you. And, uh, somebody had asked last time how much time I spent, I know Laura said she spent about forty percent of her time. Just this past week, from our last meeting till this meeting, not including working on the stuff that we've done today, and special events that have been coming in, I've been dealing with, I've had almost ten hours just on
That's what I'm saying.
Talking to people, so, yeah, special events, and, you know, reviewing plans, and telling them what they need, and trying to, uh, walk them through, so that they understand what they need to do.
It's very time for them.
It's, it's a lot of time.
Yeah.
And then you have some big events that just happen, and then they're canceled.
Well, we had a few canceled recently.
Yeah, the one that came in, the Warrior Run, that was, that was in for a couple of weeks, I didn't get a copy of it because it wasn't complete, and I didn't, because I didn't have time to work on it, but now they've gone and canceled it, so you can't just
Right, so it's, 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 so, that's why, that's why I say a non-refundable fee, because everybody's still doing the work, so
I agree.
in order to take an application, there needs to be the fee with it, and it's a non-refundable fee when they handed it in.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, I like it.
So if they cancel there, then for whatever reason, they're not getting their application.
It's a non-refundable fee, because we've still done all the work.
Yep, yeah, no, absolutely. All righty.
Moving on to resolutions?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
There's twenty-seven.
That's my bound.
Yes, I, I just made it up all by myself, yes.
All right, we're ready to start here?
We're ready.
Okay, the first one is attendance of one police department employee to the two thousand eighteen I A C P conference.
Okay, hold on a second. Okay, so I have
It's kicked off again, though.
Yeah, you're good, you're missing. So
I've been here, man.
My first one that I have in the packet is seven ninety Old Country Road Water Capital Bridge.
All right, well, that's the next one.
There's one above it.
It's nine, do you have nine-one, do you have?
I don't have one above it.
You don't have one above it?
All right, well, let's do the seven ninety one.
Where are you looking?
I went to
Are you on, are you in Minutetrap?
You want me?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, if you go over to the bend on the side, is it, is it there?
And then I'm gonna go there, and I'm gonna go to
Do you have nine-one there?
Why?
Okay.
Agenda packet.
Well, I, I went past that already.
Oh, you're already, you don't like that.
No, I, it's too bad, it's, it's not, it doesn't warm.
Agenda packet, so Yeah, so, I mean, you can
Well, I got it again, I'll put it back.
So, I got it.
There's no notes now, I take notes, and then I have to delete them immediately, so that
Okay, can we keep going?
Nobody can look into them.
Yes.
Okay, seven ninety Old Country
What is this one, this one is
It's a, a seminar, a police seminar?
Yep. Article, helping, increase for improvement facilities in Stewart District.
Where are you?
I do not know, are you at nine-two?
No, we have one ahead of that.
Are you in the scoping session?
We have, uh, public hearings, public hearings.
Oh, these are public hearings, that's why. That's why.
Okay, just click over on nine.
Nope, nope, nope.
No. Where are you?
Okay, nine-one, here we are, the police department, okay, good.
They were in the public hearings. All right, so now we're on number two, nine-two.
They never taught us this in school, didn't they?
Seven ninety Old Country Road Water Capital Project eight-one eight-five-four.
Okay, a hundred thousand dollars in realty.
Okay, uh, nine-three. Ratifies authorization for designated alcohol service vendors to serve alcohol at the Riverhead Country Fair, Street Festival on Sunday, October seventh, two thousand eighteen, eight AM to five PM, with Riverhead Townscape Incorporated along Main Street between Griffin Avenue and Union Avenue, inclusive of Laconic Avenue and the Riverfront, authorizes a supervisor to execute a license agreement with the designated alcohol service vendors and Riverhead Townscape Incorporated, and when you have to read that, that's gonna be Jim.
They're all, they're all, they're all local restaurants, so
We'll make sure of that.
Yeah.
All local restaurants.
Nine-four is assumed lead agency for purposes of secret review, and authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice of a public hearing for the special permit application for the Real Life Church of Wading River, twenty-nine Dogwood Drive, Wading River, New York, Suffolk County Tax Math Number six hundred dash seventy-two point two, dash two, six hundred, uh, dash seventy-two, dash two, dash seven, seven hundred seventy-two dash two dash eight.
Only ten, that's the one.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's
And we're gonna put up all the room with notice. Nine-five is classifieds action pursuant to secret issues negative declaration and grant special permit for accessory outdoor storage at eighty-four Lumber Company, located at seventeen fifty-one West Main Street, Riverhead, New York.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself from that one, my oldest son works for them.
Um, next one is approves a chapter two fifty-five application of Costco wholesale, number seven eighty-five, retail sale of Christmas trees to warehouse members.
Christmas trees. Yay.
Nine-seven is ratifies the approval, approval of chapter two fifty-five application of Home Depot Development of Maryland, Inc., carpet and rug tent sale, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, through August third, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the next one is approves chapter two fifty-five application of New Hope Rising, Inc., inaugural softball tournament and home dun, homerun derby Saturday, October twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Now, they, I don't know who, they're actually using Stotsky Park, and they're gonna have craft sales and food concessions and all that. It's not Stotsky Park, is Stotsky Park for me? All right, I, I know we have, I wonder if they're using the vendors that have contracted out to those locations, something.
Probably not, because they have
Otherwise, you're gonna have
All right, we'll have, we'll check on that.
Just make sure that they're included, that's all.
Do they, do they have a time frame, when they even that day, do they have a time frame, is it from like Memorial Day to Labor Day kind of thing, or is that throughout the
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
We'll check.
Yeah, you might be right on that, I reckon, yeah, I think it's a
Uh, nine-nine is amends resolution number six forty-five of August seventh, two thousand and eighteen, approves the chapter two fifty-five application of the Long Island Moose Classic Car Club. Ten is approves chapter two fifty-five application of the Theodore Roosevelt Council, Inc., Boy Scouts Haunted Woods Walk, October twenty-sixth through October twenty-eighth.
Shift count.
Eleven approves chapter two fifty-five application of Riverhead Raceway, Inc., Fall Festival at Riverhead Raceway, Sunday, October fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I know. Um, uh, twelve is appoints a call on recreation specialist sports to the recreation department.
Very rigging.
Um, thirteen is authorize a supervisor to issue a letter to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services allowing the use of Pine Barrens credits that originated from property located in Riverhead, head? Freckle Face Real Estate Holding.
Of us Alfred. Alfred Newman.
Uh, next is, uh, appoints call and recreation staff to the recreation department. Fifteen is appoints a call on recreation one to the recreation department. Uh, the next one is appoints a call on recreation specialist sports to the recreation department. Seventeen is ratifies the public, publication and posting of a notice to amend CDBD budget for two thousand and six, sixteen and seventeen.
Really?
This being amended.
This is, we can ask Dawn to come in, because it, the paper that was here is not here.
It is, yeah.
It, it's not coming up on
Oh, it's coming up on
Basically, what it is, is there was funding in there for home improvements in sixteen and seventeen, um, that the, uh, we are getting additional CDBD money for this year, but in order to get that additional money, uh, money is coming out of the sixteen and seventeen money, and being used to complete those projects before December thirty-first.
If you go to, so, school now, a little bit, you'll see this
No, it's not on
It's on here, I have it.
Do you wanna just read what the budget adjustments are?
They're all over here now.
With the CDBD buzz, budget adjustments.
Um, just from two, the whole thing?
It's a tax in A, if you look at that.
I think it's just forty, like forty-two thousand that's coming, I don't know what that one is, I didn't see them.
Uh, forty-two thousand, it says current, and the proposed change is sixteen-three thousand three hundred twenty-nine, and amended budget is one hundred five thousand three hundred twenty-nine. That's the year two thousand seventeen. That's down
Yeah, yeah, but have her come in, just to explain it, I think
Because they took the fifty-five thousand five seventy-eight away from the home improvement program, and put it towards the downtown pedestrian safety improvement and
Right, it did not That needed to be set, spent in this year.
Well, here's my resolution.
Right.
I can go down to this public notice.
And the, the projects for the home improvement are not ready to be done for this year.
And it comes up to the, uh, oh, hell, it wasn't there a minute ago, well, let's give it a look then. Oh, hell, it wasn't a minute ago, well, let's go look at it.
Molly, you don't have it on yours?
Don't have it, I don't have it.
But I downloaded before.
You're not looking at the split screen?
No.
Oh, damn.
Maybe they didn't need it.
Dawn is coming, Dawn is gonna come in to explain it, it, the, the money will still be spent in home improvement, but the other projects needed to be completed for this and those, those, the home improvement projects are not ready to be put forward.
Twenty seventeen ninety-nine, so.
And so it's sixteen, that's, we're just gonna have you explain the budget of transfers.
Sure.
Adjustments.
Sixty-three thousand dollar change, who to go, you know, you've had eight seconds to prepare.
No, he's been doing this, he's been doing this for a week and a half already.
So the reason is, the we're a member of the Suffolk County Consortium, so certain towns, in, in the county, we're part of a consortium, so we, our performance as a consortium reflects how much money the consortium gets back from us, so the whole consortium is, is a little bit behind in spending, so the county has some pressure on them to get some spending done as fast as possible.
That's not uncommon.
No, but especially this particular year, that they have some extra pressure, so the consortium met, uh, met about a week and a half ago and they asked everybody to transfer some money around and get some eligible project spent as soon as possible, so there were certain things that we were not quite ready for, that we couldn't meet the county's deadline at the end of the year to get spent, get, case of checks back, and so, things that we did, did not accomplish that we wanted to, this year, we'll just reallocate funds from the following year, and we're more likely to get more money if we.
Spend down these accounts first.
Right.
Gotcha.
So the, they're going to, the projects that are gonna be done is, uh, uh, where the community garden is there, um, the sidewalk is all cracked, um, and so that will be repaved there, and then the road behind it by Grandible Park, behind that, the town halls will be repaved because that is, um, having.
Pot Hole Avenue.
Pot Hole Avenue there, and then, Jimmy will be very happy, Benjamin Place is getting repaid.
Oh.
So it's, it's, that's really.
Does that include all the new nice signs and all that stuff that went down there?
The wayfaring signs are a separate, separate, and those are, those should be ready to be placed up fairly soon, the wayfaring signs, and there'll also be additional lighting on Paconic Avenue, the lights that are, uh, that, that's, that's this year, right?
I'm gonna crosswalk, that's terrible, crosswalks like.
Um, or have, have, they need to be, uh, they need to be replaced, so those will be, those will be replaced also, and I think there'll also be additional trash cans that will be, um, placed out.
Yeah, I know someone removed on Main Street.
There shouldn't have been any, there shouldn't have been anybody that, that, any that were removed.
The one right in front of that Jamaican place, uh, and, uh, uh, Blue Duck and all that, that's gone.
Oh, I thought they were supposed to.
When, when Subway moved out, I guess somebody slipped it down, it was nothing, I don't know.
Well, it shouldn't, it shouldn't, I know they were having an issue with bees over there. So I don't know if they moved, because they, they were having an issue with the bees, I know I had heard about that.
Well, that's the ice cream. It was, it was all, one of the old wooden ones, and it's just gone.
But these will, these will conform with the metal ones, it'll conform with the, when we walk downtown, part of the issue with the, uh, the, the police was the security of the garbage cans there, the other garbage cans, you can put pla- uh, clear plastic in and be able to see through the, the metal garbage cans, um, so that was one of the issues that was.
I'm sure this isn't nowhere near enough what we need to do, but it.
And then all these projects, of course, have to be in the low to moderate income area, so.
Yeah.
That's why it was these particular areas that were actually chosen.
Excellent, right, okay.
So, I just have one question about Pot Hole Alley behind that, um, those buildings over there by Grandible Park. I know that we had problems years ago with illicit discharge, because the roof runoff was running right over that road, and that was what was causing the potholes, so has that been corrected? I would check that through engineering before.
Where is Pot Hole Alley, I never heard of it.
We go in and repave, and we still have the same problem, because the water is coming right through the gutters and leaders right out into the roadway.
I don't know, it.
It, it is, tr- that, it was dressed by engineering, um, the, the owner of that property has been contacted, but, but it also, the way the road will sit will be up a little higher, and then there is also going to be a concrete, um, drainage trough, uh, put in there to address it.
Where is this at, where's, where is this?
Behind Mary here.
Yeah.
Oh, I never heard that called Pot Hole Alley.
I just made it up.
Well. Oh, wow, it is, but the reason why it is is because of the illicit discharge, so, I mean, but we're, so we're gonna fix the property owner's problem, which is.
But it is, it's bad, drive back, yeah. Right.
Well, the property owner is gonna fix his problem, because it's his problem, but, but we're, we're, we're amending it, so it doesn't in- impact on, on the improvements that we're, we're gonna do.
Right.
Simple.
But the drainage structure, I mean.
That will be put in place in the year.
By us, when?
Yes, that's, that's Drew went over and, and, and assessed it, and I think they had, also had somebody come out, um, and take a look at it, how to correct the problem, so it didn't, it didn't continue to erode our way.
Okay, I'll check with Drew on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Next one is rescinds resolution number twenty-eighteen dash seven forty, uh, charter coach transportation. Next is award bid for traffic si- signal repair and maintenance. Uh, Riverhead Water District budget adjustment to capital project installation of emergency generators at plant number one and sixteen. Uh, authorize a supervisor to execute an agreement with Sterling Info System, is this, was this pulled or is this still on here? Do I have an old one?
It's not in here.
Oh, no, we don't, that was.
Nine twenty was pulled.
It goes right to the chaperone.
Uh, nine twenty-two, which is appoint a call on chaperone to the recreation department. Nine twenty-three is funding for farm road drainage and truck repairs. And that's it.
And I have one, which is the, um, establishing the policy for town hall hours and observance of September eleventh.
Oh, okay. And here's one too, for, for.
Oh, I've been this gracious.